I'm over here trying to just get plugs on and get them. Because the only thing about how much.
All right, call the meeting to order. Looks like there's going to be some items from the public. So anybody who wants to come forward, state your name for the record. And if you're going to repeat after what one person already has spoken says, we'll hear your concerns. But and I'll try to educate you real quick. But there's also timelines that are just put up at the podium that you need to take one. And it tells you exactly the timeline from, I think, 2004 that this started. And he was in the office when it started, okay? Mr. Moore?
Thank you, Mr. Cogan Ever. If I may.
And we do need to keep this limited about three minutes apiece if we won't be able to keep on schedule.
I've been dropped off before.
Well, thank you for allowing me to come and speak to you today. I want my comments to be taken as positive rather than negative. I'm trying to, I'm like the government. We're here to help.
As Ron Reagan said, the most seven worst dreadful words.
Right. Hey, the first thing I'd like to do is kind of segue from what Floyd Kersey told you in January. Floyd was representative of the EPCD when he came in. My name is James Moore, citizen of Burke County, address 436, Earl's Road. The first sheet that you have there is an executive summary, evaluation from EPA on the projects that Eastern Panhandle has proposed their WIP three or Phase Three of their WIP application to EPA. Notice that their procedures, their items, their things that they're going to do have been approved by EPA. And the reason I want to emphasize that is that I want you to turn to the next sheet and notice, this is my farm. The yellow line on your left is the edge of our property which borders Butts Mill Road. Just to the right of that yellow line, there's a stream called White's Run. If you're looking at the top of the page, the first field there that has the yellow kind of oblong circle in it, that's about 8.6 acres of switchgrass. Switchgrass grows about six foot tall. It is a wildlife habitat area. Directly north of that, which is heading toward the top of the page, you'll see a lot of construction. That's a development. The water runs off through that field into that development. Now that I have switchgrass in there, that's switchgrass grows six foot tall and it is never harvested. It stands until the snow knocks it down or the next year's root. And that has produced a mat. And what that mat does, it reduces the amount of water flow off our property onto the development. It also reduces sediment. Those are two main things that you're concerned with with stormwater management. Sediment, the second one is nutrient management and also water flow. So my eight acres there reduces the amount of water going into that development. If you continue to your right, you'll see four more fields. The first one is green. That is a hay field, also used as pasture. The next three are also hay field, used as pasture. Those fences there are called divisional fencing. I have put in over 10,000 feet of divisional fencing on my farm. Divisional fencing allows us to rotate cattle from field to field. And what you want to do as a farmer is maintain at least three to six inches of grass on your ground. About three to six inches prevents erosion. It also keeps the ground cooler. It reduces the evaporation whenever there's rainwater and kind of moisture in the ground. You don't want to over graze. If I were to not have any fencing on my property, the cattle will go in and eat the best grass in spring of the year. And what they'll do, they'll wait till that grass grows again and then they'll come right back to that same spot. I'll end up having high grass, low grass eaten down to the ground. So by rotational grazing, you can control the amount of cows on a piece of property and also how long they're in there. So we maintain grass cover. If you come to the south, there's a little box there. That box is a drinker. There are four drinkers, one, two, three, four, five, five drinkers that you see on that property. That drinker, the first one is a little yellow, the little circle, that's a pond. That pond also serves as a stormwater management pond. The water comes down from the left, down into that pond. That pond was put in probably back in 1930s, 1940s. And we moved in in 76 and about 1980, I cleaned that pond out. The reason you have to clean it out is if you think of a cup and you put hand, a cup is four ounces. You put four ounces of water in it, it fills the cup up. If you put two ounces of dirt in, how much water can you put in? About two ounces of water. So what happens, the pond's filled up with sediment and you have to clean them out. So that pond was cleaned out. Around, back towards the bottom of the page and to the right, you'll see somewhat of a triangle. That is the pond that I built. And that also serves as a stormwater management pond. And also, if you notice the fencing around both those ponds, that is exclusion fence. That keeps the cattle out of the pond. And as you drive down the road and you see cattle standing in pond, guess what they do?
Relieve themselves.
They're drinking out of one end and out the other end, they're eliminating their waste. Well, my cows don't get in that pond, either of our ponds. What we do is flash graze. We'll let them in for one day at the most and then get them right back out. And that's to keep the grass down. If the grass gets too high, it gets, falls over, it gets matted and the water just runs off. So what we want to do is keep the grass there. We also brush all those fields to keep the grass up a certain depth, height, three to six inches. The other boxes that you see, we have installed over 2,000 feet of pipe. We built a, or drilled a well at toward the bottom of the page on mine. It's, well, it's, you have a color one, it's black. That is a well and also a circle around that. That's the pumping station. We have pumped water all the way out to the pond or the drinker out on top of the hill there and also to the other two drinkers that you see there. We have also subdivided the other fields. And again, we've put in over 10,000 feet of fencing. Fencing costs is, I'm going to say about a dollar eighty, I think it is, a foot. So we've spent over $18,000, approximately $18,000 just in divisional fencing. All of our planning is done by no-till. We do not have any row crops on our farm. It's all grass and hay. We have done all that we can and continue to try to do more to prevent erosion, to sediment control. And the next thing I want to talk to you about is nutrient management. Right behind our barn, which is near the black box that you see there, we have a Quonset Hutt barn. And behind that, we have feeding pads we put in. The reason feeding pads is that you put cows out on the field and feed them in a, any kind of hay ring or whatever, they will tear up the ground around there. And you'll have these spots all over the area, all over your fields. What we do, we have them isolated right there behind the barn. We back out on gravel. We pull up on the pad, concrete pad, drop the hay in the feeder. They eat there. The manure stays right there. We collect them out and put them out in our fields. Nutrient management again. Feeding pad. Also, every field we have, with the exception of the switchgrass field, we do soil tests every two to three, five years. The reason we don't do the switchgrass, six foot tall, you don't want to grow anymore. You don't want any nutrients there to flow off from the other crop. We just fertilize the switchgrass fields. The other fields, we lime them. If your acidity is too high, the nutrients you put on will not be used by the crops. It'll just run off. It's just like you or I, we have acid reflux or acid indigestion. We don't want to eat. That's what grass is. If it has too, the acid's too high, it will not take in the minerals. The minerals in it just flushed off. So by doing the soil test, we also know minerals we need to put on the ground. We also need to know how much lime to put on ground. We apply lime, we apply fertilizer as needed. All of our BMPs are verified to either the WBACAD, West Virginia Conservation Agency staff, NRCS staff, or the FSA staff, which are all the government. We, the state of West Virginia has to maintain the programs to address the Chesapeake Bay just as you are trying to address the demands for the EPA Chesapeake Bay. Again, the original sheet I gave you shows that West Virginia is meeting its requirements from EPA Chesapeake Bay. And because we are doing so well in West Virginia, there are six states and a district, Columbia, make up the Chesapeake Bay plan, program, area of nation. We are the only state that does not require operators to do things. West Virginia is a volunteer program. And back when we started dealing with them, EPA said, no, you've got to require, you've got to require. And at that time, the commissioner discussed Douglas, he said, no, we're not going to. Our farmers are going to be here, they will do what's right. So we've been able to maintain that in the state of West Virginia. The only state that does that on a volunteer basis. So it's a volunteer program, just like me. We are meeting the expectations from EPA on agriculture. Now, I was out and addressed stormwater management. I feel that everything that Eastern Panhandle Conservation District does in Burke County should be applied to Burke County's demands.
We talk about that all the time, yeah. It's all, all the efforts need to be put together.
Exactly right. It's being done, it's being reported from your side, meaning are y'all getting the credit that we're bringing out?
Actually, I, one gentleman that gives the PR out and stuff, Chad, he's been told that all that stuff has to be put together. EPA, I understand, will be back in county before long. The DEP, check any progress and stuff. I met with the soil conservation out, the office out there and said, hey, all the good stuff you do, make sure that the sewer district, the farming district knows about it so we can include it in the information package.
Exactly right. So this is the third phase for Eastern Panhandle for the state of West Virginia. So they've been through Phase One and Phase Two, they're in Phase Three. They've been able to do this for years. I know back, far back to 2007 at least. That's 12 years they've been able to do this. I think it's on a five-year basis. I want to thank you again for allowing me to speak. I want to thank you for the exemption that you gave to Homestead, that the Homestead exemption on this. Now, because what I've told you, I'd like to have the exemption on my farm for paying the stormwater management fee. I know it's not much money. In fact, the bill's, I think, $17 and something.
That's every six months. Well, actually.
Well, and that's the thing on the bill. It doesn't say, is it every six months or is it quarterly or what?
Actually, just so, just so everyone knows, this county council has been given the task to approve, deny, or modify the requests coming from the stormwater district, okay? Which is a new utility that have to be, had to be formed to meet the public service and the DEP and EPA and the Department of Justice criteria. This council, this body's only job is to do that. We don't, we don't send the bills out, we don't collect the bills, we don't, you know, we don't do any of that stuff, all right? Now, just so everybody understands, because we owe it to you, make sure you understand so you can help get the work out, is there's several things that goes on. Right now, the Department of Justice was coming after the sewer district because they weren't happy with what was going on, right? So one of the things that you see, if you get the newspaper, you look at the media, one of the things that's happening through Pennsylvania and Maryland is everybody's starting to charge the fees because that's the biggest criteria. You've got to have a fee to be able to regulate and get this stuff started. The ultimate goal in the future is to have a fee based on impervious area with credits, okay? So basically, hypothetically, not saying it would fit you, but let's put it something else. If I had a house and I had grain barrels or if I was Macy's or P&amp;G that has not only stormwater quality, quantity, but they also have quality, it's quantity and quality, they would get a big credit for that. But also, they would have a huge impervious area that they would be paying on because of the impervious area instead of where a farm, you know, the only probably thing you have impervious would be your barn, your house and your driveway, right?
Right. Feeding bed.
So the only thing, the only way that they could get established to be able to hire the people to do this next phase, which would be based on impervious area and credits, was just do a flat fee, right? But within probably a year and a half, at the most, they're looking to have it, the bill generated by impervious area with a possibility of credit, okay? That's what they're working on. The other thing that could affect you, and maybe some of y'all in the room, is, and I just talked to Greg Rowe, which is the chairman of the Storm Sewer District, just yesterday. Because people ask, you know Kelly Bargis, he called me yesterday, asked, why isn't Morton County and Jefferson County having to do this? They're in the Chesapeake watershed. Well, it's generated by density, right? Burke County has twice the population as Jefferson County does. The crazy thing about that is, is the density is from North Mountain east to Jefferson County line, Maryland, Virginia, up and down the 81 corridor. And it's not only the density along the 81 corridor, but it's any water that flows in to that area, that drainage space.
Watershed.
The sewer, the Storm Sewer District has asked the DEP to modify their permit and take everything west of North Mountain off because there's no density there.
Burke County, the entire Burke County is impervious.
Right. Yeah. And that was done back in 2004, which is four years before that justice even got here.
Yeah. Well, I served on the Conservation District for about 18 years. And I'm familiar with all this process. And I know that when the previous county council made that application to EPA, they made it county-wide because they were thinking it'd be county-wide public water and sewer and everything else. Well, that hasn't happened yet.
Yeah.
And it's not going to happen in probably our lifetime.
Right.
So that's what kind of boxed you guys in to it.
So, so, so the Storm Sewer District has asked the DEP to modify their, their permit. And they asked for their determination because there's also a $5,000 application fee. They never responded to them to this day.
DEP hasn't?
DEP has not. So now, DEP or the Storm Sewer District has reapplied for a modified permit and wrote a check to DEP for $5,000. They're waiting to hear from them. So, you know, just to let, I know that affects you. I know it affects Kelly. I don't know how many other people in this room it affects, but that's in the process. Anything east of the North Mountain to Jefferson County, from Virginia to Maryland, I don't think there's anything we're going to be able to do. It's going to have to have the MS4 fee in there. Now, I do know that the fee's going to be modified for sure. And so the more impervious area you have, the more the fee's going to be. The less impervious area and credits that you may develop, like I said, rain barrels or doing some, many, many things like Jim's doing as a farmer, then that can get reduced. So hopefully that helps some of you understand what's going on.
Who did you say has the authority to reduce the fees?
Well, and Doug, Doug said that we had that opportunity, but that opportunity has came and went. So that was just for President Kilp, sorry about that.
No, you're fine.
That was just for that, that review process when they come to us. So once we, once we make our decision, which we did, now it's up to them. So we don't have an opportunity to modify or deny or, or increase or change anything until they would come back to this body for another, another ruling on, on what they want to do to change. So at this point, everything is in their hands.
Well, I came here and I told you I want to be positive on this. I don't want negatives. The statement you just made to me is negative. Because, well, because DEP had nothing to do with setting the fee.
No, no.
The DEP, the anything, the part that they've had that caused this fee to be created was that they were going to find one. They were going to assess you or charge you a per day because you weren't doing it.
That's the Department of Justice was going to do this, not us.
Oh, the EPA or DEP went through them to do it.
Right. Not us. It's the sewer district, not the government.
I hope we're all mature enough here to realize that government, one entity doesn't fight all the battles. They go through the Department of Justice, someone else to fight it. For instance, y'all have lawyers here. You're not going to get legal things. You get somebody else to do it. So that's what they did. But the fee was set by you all. It was set by the recommendation of the Storm Water Management Board, as I understand it, to you all. And you all set the, you established it. You all also have the authority to either reduce it or you have the authority to amend it, but.
I don't think we have.
We don't. We did, we did at that point. We did at that point, but once that decision was made.
What decision? What decision?
So once we ruled on that request and our ruling allowed us at that point, once we make that ruling, then it's out of our hands. And the only way we get to make a decision upon it again is if they request us to do some type of modification, then we have the right to do those three again.
And I'll go one step further, Mr. Banney. You can correct me, but we already have a short window to rule on that. Or it becomes law.
If we don't.
You guys, I apologize for having to say it, the yard law.
Okay, well, I told you you had three minutes.
Okay, I know, but I think you took part in my time, but. Who appointed the two committees, the two boards? Solid Waste Authority and the Storm Water Management. Who appointed this?
Storm Sewer and the Sewer Board.
Well, they're not supposed to be together, but yet they are. Who appointed them?
This, this council appoints the board members.
Who elected you all?
The people.
Who elected them?
Us.
Right. So this body that you all created, you have control over them.
We don't elect them, we appoint them.
Well, right, you created, you created a board.
The only control we have is appointment. I mean, we can appoint somebody else. I mean, we can appoint somebody else to that board. We don't fund that board.
I apologize for concern, I can't accept that being true, because you do. So I'll thank you again for your time, and I, I'm sorry that, uh, we're having this disagreement. I came in here in all intent trying to give you all suggestions on how you can address this in any way that's gonna satisfy lots of concerns.
If you're, if you're, if you're correct, I'd like for you to give me a copy of the legislative ruling that allows us to modify that, if you, or if you know that for a fact.
I think what Jim said is that because you appoint them, you can give them a fraction of order to make the change. But those, uh, the reason it was taken that sewer water, stormwater, separate from this body, take pressure and politics out of it as much as possible.
I understand that.
And, uh, and this board, this body has always tried to let those, those separate bodies independent as possible. Now, they haven't always accomplished independence. They let people know, but, but the, the EPA said to us through DEP, you have to have a revenue stream, and it has to be sufficient to be sustained, to sustain what you need to do. And that's, that's why the fee got set the way it got set first, and as President indicated, it's gonna change over the next year or year and a half.
I totally agree with that, Norman. You and I have known each other for a long time, and I respect your power. Uh, that fee from EPA or Department of Justice is what's driven all this. But my point that I'm trying to make is that you all appointed that board. And with the exception of one person, they're all the same people in both boards.
Yeah, and, and the reason why that was, Jim, because the sewer district's been dealing with this since two thousand six. So to create a whole different board, start the storm, and start all over again with people that had no knowledge of what's going on, would, would have been insane at this point in time. But I can tell you what, there's a lot of board openings open if you wanna volunteer for one. I'm also, I'm sure we'll punch you in one.
If my health were better, I'm due for surgery next Tuesday.
Well, I know you, you're a great man.
And I'm seventy-two years old. I served on the Conservation District for eighteen years. You have people that met with other, uh, I'm gonna call them dignitaries, agencies just as fast as... Y'all have anybody there? At the Conservation District?
No, I, I didn't go.
They, they were talking about them. They are there to help. There are members on that board, and there are other past members, other than Jim Moore, who have served on that water board. They have knowledge. Uh, so there are people out there, and... I don't know too many teams that have the coach and general manager and the players all being the same person. And that's kind of what you got, ladies. It, it may not be bad, but it sure looks bad, and it smells bad. When sewage problem is, sewage is the problem that's caused all this. And through EPA, DEP, and Department of Justice, now you're all trying to address it. I understand you're under the gun, I understand. Your responsibility, being under the gun, is not that important. And right now, you're not willing to listen to evidence that can be proved what I've done and simply eliminate forty dollars money out of my pocket to go pay for somebody else's problem.
It's not the way to do it, Jim, we've heard you. You're expecting us to give you an answer today, we can't do that.
No, I...
It's not our position to do that.
I'm gonna call you Mr. Cogan, however, I respect. You and I have known each other for a long time.
Yeah.
And you're not discreet on this part, that's a long time ago. But this wasn't the way to do it, and I'm not trying to oppose it now, it's in there. But I think you all should have an open mind to make adjustments as early as you can and quickly as you can. Now diffuse a lot of the issues. All you have to do, and I, again, I still feel that you do have the authority to make that change. EPA, DEP, and Department of Justice, that's not had anything to do with setting that fee. It's through the Stormwater Management Board approving the adjustments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I make a comment?
Sure.
There was a study done, the fee, the amount of the one point four million, which was divided up to be the fee of forty, forty-some dollars or whatever it happened to be, based on the study done by Maryland that they had accepted. I'm under the impression, Mr. Moore, that, uh, when they get the county mapped and have a definite what we're looking at, then I, I was thinking they were gonna be coming back with credits. That was my understanding of what we can do.
This is more, you know, hard to pay right now. Any accessory goes around every piece of... Orange, buildings. Everything you know, every... My farm, all structure, in the pool. Just like the meeting we went to, they said, "What do we do?" We got the bills. Hold on a minute. I will take it live.
The bill was generated by a nine-one-one address, and the only way you get a nine-one-one address is with a structure in recent years.
Any questions? Again, we have to... I saw it this way. Any... There aren't... We'll roll where it is. History. I'll find that out or divide that out. I'm heading toward it.
You do.
I think there's a database.
Anyone else? All right, moving on, the motion to approve the agenda.
Mr. President, there is one, one amendment to the agenda. We received an email early this morning that I eighty-one corridor again this year was not making any budget.
Okay.
Strike him.
All right, Mr. Hess, going to review and equalization. I don't know why I can't say that this year. Um, session four? Oh, I'm sorry, all right.
Modified.
Modified, right?
Modified, yes.
All right, motion debated. Second, second, any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. Any one opposed, the motion carries.
Good.
Okay.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Um, I don't think we have any appeals set up for today.
Okay.
And I do have to ask you a question. Uh, this was, this happened before I walked in here, Mr. Spurgeon is here. And, uh, he called me yesterday, and Don was out. And so I went over his property with him, and I got a couple changes I wanted to present today. Now, he says that he's booked for Thursday afternoon for hearing.
He booked with me and he said that he would be...
Okay, so the question is, you want me to present the changes I made, or you want to wait till Thursday?
Well, I guess it depends on whether you and Mr. Spurgeon are on an agreement.
Well, what I did, what I, what I changed, I think, is completely different than some of the argument that he has.
Does it yield what he can be, what he's satisfied with?
Well, I haven't went over everything that I've changed, yes, it's seen all.
Well, then, then I would say wait until the hearing on Thursday, if I'm not mistaken.
I asked, I asked.
If you, if you and him want to go out and see if you come to an agreement today, then that's one thing, we can bring you back in. If you don't, at three o'clock, or a little after three. If you all get, if you all get worked out today, then he doesn't have to come back on Thursday.
We could do that.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, I do have one other question. Did we get everything phased with, um, quad graphics? Are we still waiting on...
I think we're still waiting on some of that stuff.
On Kathy coming to get us some information on that land value. We had two different land values that they were concerned about.
She gave you, she gave you an explanation, but I don't think Dan and I was too happy with the explanation she gave.
I didn't like it.
Yeah, I was still holding this, I didn't know whether we needed to...
Well, let's hold it, I'll send you, she, somebody sent a follow-up to it, which I don't know whether you've seen.
Yeah, I think I've seen that, they, they explained how they did the pricing for the two different lots.
Yeah, so maybe, uh, yeah, that's the one we're talking about. You need to explain that to the council at some point, I would look back today.
Well, maybe, I ask you, I think...
I'll, I'll, I'll meet with you, go over it with you.
I think the state tax department will explain what we did.
I'm sorry?
I think the state tax department will explain what we did, I didn't do it.
And that, that's how we felt about last year. If they're gonna mess with our books, they need to be, come to us and present their case, rather than just...
Well, I mean, they do...
All right.
I'll, I'll meet with you and...
Yeah, we can talk about it.
And we'll just call Kathy and Dorsey next week about here.
We'll talk about it.
What's the explanation using your land values, though? Isn't that what they said, they use his land values?
It was industrial versus commercial.
Right. Which is two different tables, the way they look. Okay, I'll go talk with Mr. Spurgeon and see what he comes up with.
All right, thank you. All right. Sure. All right. I thought he said it.
If you were gonna send me changes, it would make pretty much sense. But he knew, he wasn't even concerned about yours. He just turned around and walked out of the room. What do you think, Jeff?
Don't try to get me involved in your stuff.
Okay. There are four parcels that have changes have been made to that I need to explain to you. Um, the first one is Falling Waters, map fourteen P, parcel seventy-six. Scott and Karen Sassman, we removed the homestead. When we were proofing homestead, um, we didn't have a homestead card signed by the Sassmans. And when we were finally able to contact them, they said, "No, we don't qualify for homestead exemption." And when we did more research, they had purchased the house a couple of years ago. The previous owner had had homestead, and when we made the transfer, somebody neglected to remove the homestead, so it's now been removed for twenty twenty. The Sassmans are aware of that.
So it basically says, previous, it's adjusted, they're the same.
Yeah, so the assessment really isn't changing.
It just removed the homestead.
We just removed the homestead. We didn't change any other value.
Okay.
Um, the second one is, uh, Hedgesville, map nineteen, parcel two, Charlotte Wood. The acres for the managed timberland were adjusted. They had been approved originally for two hundred and forty-nine point seven-three acres in managed timberland. Um, they had gotten an increased letter. They, when they called me, I explained what had happened, and we went back and forth with the Division of Forestry. And Division of Forestry actually sent a forester out there to check the acreage, and they came back last Friday and told me that there are actually two hundred and sixty-four point one acres in managed timber. So that changed the assessment from one hundred thirty thousand nine hundred and twenty to one hundred twenty-seven thousand seven hundred and forty dollars. Ms. Wood's, um, son-in-law was notified of, um, the Division of Forestry's decision. I have not notified him of the value change yet. The third parcel is, uh, Mill Creek, map eleven, parcel fourteen point seven. Michael Custer and Sharon Custer. Um, the tax class was changed to class two. When we were doing proofing, we discovered that this parcel is residual or next to the parcel where they live. And so that we tried to give those parcels class two if its owner occupied next door. So the assessment doesn't change, we're just changing the tax class.
So it's, uh, from three to two?
It's going from three to two. The last parcel has a class split on it. It is Mill Creek, map seventeen, parcel forty point two, Virgil and Linda Fiddler. Um, they had come in today about their stormwater bill, and in discussing the issue with the stormwater, trying to explain to them the issues. Um, when I looked at the, the parcel, I realized that the class split had not been worked correctly. Um, and so I explained that to the Fiddlers. Excuse me, we also discovered that, um, we just needed to change the values around. Um, the homestead had been removed a couple of years in error, so we added the homestead back. So for the class two portion, the previous assessment was one hundred fifteen thousand seven hundred and forty dollars. The new assessment is one oh four eight forty. After a homestead, it would be eighty-four eight forty. The class three portion...
Because of the twenty thousand.
Right. The class three portion, um, we changed it from one thousand two hundred assessment to twelve thousand one hundred dollars assessment. And that's because the split had not been worked correctly. And they are aware, I explained to them that I couldn't just leave a mistake when I found a mistake. And so they are both aware.
And realistically, it seems like all these are...
With the exception of the last one.
Well, the last, yeah, but I mean, it's...
If you're looking at tax dollars...
It's the same.
Well, no.
It's the same taxpayer.
Well, like the very first one, their tax bill theoretically will go up because the homestead came off.
They agree that they don't, they don't need the homestead, they're not...
They do not qualify, they're not sixty-five, and they're not disabled.
So they understand that already?
Yes, they do.
So there's no letter that really needs to go out unless you want to do the class three portion of the...
I believe we already sent them a letter, assessments. Um, my instructions to the personnel in the office is when we find something like that, I like to notify somebody in writing so that it's not just that we tell you something over the telephone, but we also put it in writing because sometimes what you hear isn't the same thing as what you read.
But, but Fiddler's property overall, he, he took first property, second property, is probably gonna, should be a, a tax decrease as a group.
Yes, it should be.
I would think.
Yes, it should be.
Or very close.
It was a, when I looked at, because last year's bill was done wrong, um, when I looked at last year's, they probably paid about a hundred and twenty-two dollars too much, by my calculations. Not, I did them very quickly, so I need to double-check my numbers. But I would assume that that would probably be, depending on what your levy rate's gonna be this year, about the same.
I was getting that. There need to sit out a letter for any of these because it's gonna be pretty much about the same, if not, it will decrease the most of them. All right, so we need to accept these changes. Uh, can we have a motion to accept the changes? Thank you, Mr. President, this page.
So much.
Motion debated, seconded, any discussion? Not all in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the Sessor Office? Next on our agenda is Amy Gornaldorf, Executive Director of Burkey Senior Services. You're after game, buddy.
Those normally go down this way.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, I'm only kidding.
I want it, there we go.
Thank you, Amy.
Not a problem.
You have quality control going down there.
There we go, that works, hey, you always have to have one of those. And that was not purchased with senior sun, senior center money. I just want that noted for the record.
Yep.
Okay. Uh, good afternoon. Um, I'm before you asking for money for funding for this year. Um, I do just want to send a sincere and heartfelt thank you for everything you did for our building. Uh, if you haven't stopped by to see it, it is absolutely gorgeous.
If you drive by last, the two weeks you got.
It is beautiful, and it is so nice now, when it rains, not to have to worry about the windows flooding on the front half of the building. So thank you so much. Um, it's, it's just wonderful. Um, everything there is done and taken care of. We did get the warranty for the, the roof, so it's one hundred percent complete, which is great. Um, and I was just in time because we are growing. Uh, this year, we had an increase in all of our services.
Our respite services have grown. Uh, respite is a program that is offered for caregivers caring for loved ones with an Alzheimer dementia diagnosis. So we are caring for, uh, those participants on site and also in their homes. This is one of our, one of our fastest-growing programs because the diagnosis of dementia and Alzheimer's is, um, just growing leaps and bounds. So, uh, that, there was growth there. We've also provided about three thousand more meals, uh, this past year than what we did the year before. So, um, our seniors are, are needing to eat as well. So, uh, in my request, we did ask for sixty-six thousand six hundred and fifty-seven dollars. And the way that that breaks down, um, we are asking for thirty-five thousand of that to be for our custodian that, um, that works on site. And that person takes care of the cleaning, the daily, day-to-day, uh, things, um, within the facility. That also includes a facilities manager, uh, who splits her time across all departments. But basically, she's the spearhead and, and the point of contact for communicating with Jack and his crew anytime there would, there would be any kind of an issue. So all of our departments can go to one person, and Jack communicates with one person. So, um, that's included in that as well. Um, we also use the funds that we receive from, from the county, um, for our matches for our vehicles. Uh, we're looking to purchase another handicapped accessible van in 2021, so we'll need the match, um, in order to be able to purchase that. And also, we use the building space, um, for a match.
Twelve pasture transport van.
Mm-hmm.
Exactly what does that, is that picking up individuals that, and bringing them to the senior service center?
Yes, it's bringing them to the center, and it's also taking them to medical appointments, um, throughout the county, and also to dialysis, um, any, any kind of medical.
The transit authority's doing that as well now?
The transit authority does do that. We do partner with them. If it's something that we can't provide, we provide Medicaid trips. Um, so if it's something that we can't pick up because we are a much smaller staff, um, we do partner with other agencies, um, to be able to make that happen.
So there's not a duplication of services here, then?
No, there's not. Um, there's, there's a huge need in the county for this service. Our services are different than all others because of the way our funding works. We can provide these trips at no cost to our seniors. So, um, their trips are a suggested donation, but if they can't afford the donation of a few dollars, we're still gonna provide the trips because they still need to get to dialysis. They still need to get to their, their medical appointments, and we do wanna bring them to the center for activities and for meals, for nutritious meal. Um, we have partnered with EPTA. We are a stop now for the, for Eastern Panhandle Transit Authority, which has been great. Um, and we also send some of our vehicles to them as well, um, for maintenance and for repairs. So we are utilizing them, and that saved us a lot of money.
How many vehicles?
We have seven that we transport with. Um, and then we have two mini vans that we use, uh, for seniors to have necessary air, run necessary errands. Um, I did also wanna mention that we have cut costs this year by partnering with, uh, Gary and his group, um, with converting our phone lines. So we're now working off of county phones, which has been great. Um, and we do use the IT services provided by the county.
Do you want to buy buildings?
No.
Just thought I'd.
I know, I know. Now, um, Jack's crew is, is phenomenal. If it, if it comes with Jack and his crew, sure.
Well, it's in great shape now.
It is. No, no, it still don't. We still can't afford the, the upkeep of the inside.
You can't for free?
I bet you would.
Wonder in kind?
Yes.
In kind. So that would be, that you give the county council credit for?
Um, well, we actually use, um, eight thousand fifty-seven dollars is, um, used for the building match for our respite services.
No, but it, it, in kind, in kind income, would that be, oh, you kinda like, would that be like building rent that we.
Yes.
And building maintenance and building repairs and.
On service.
Yes, yes.
Two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. I was just kinda wondering what value you put on that of what the county does toward the bill. Because that is a huge.
That, yes, absolutely. Um, and I will be completely honest, the majority of that would be, would be county in kind. Absolutely. I, I.
Right.
We're in a beautiful building. Um, I will say that, um, anytime we have visitors, uh, especially from the state office, we are told all the time that we have the biggest and the, the best senior center in the state. So, you know, that's, that's thanks to you.
Best people in the state.
We have, absolutely. That's always my response. We have a very supportive county council, and we have great people. We have great people. I was going there.
People that use the building.
I was going there. Yeah, I was good. I was getting there.
They have the best seniors.
We do. We do. We just, we have the best community. Um, and it takes everyone working together. Um, and our seniors, they definitely take ownership. They definitely, um, that's their, their country club, is what they like to call it. So.
But it's, we, we say it all the time up here, it was, it was our parents, that generation that made Burke County what it is.
Sure.
Right?
Yeah.
We gotta make sure that, you know, we do our best within reason. To take care of the seniors that got us to where we.
And, and we are very grateful for that. We definitely appreciate that.
And what was the total bill on the upgrades to the building?
We calculated one five in previous fiscal year. We added two that year. Not only doing the outside, um, envelope, but we completely redid the, the roof. So this is almost two hundred.
It was, it was just over two hundred. Yeah.
Right, that's right.
And we do have funds that will be left over once the check clears from, um, the roofing, which we will reimburse back to the county.
Credit, um, because they tore off a portion of the roof, and they thought that they had it pretty well, but. Well as they thought, so we had some leak each in it. What they, what we agreed to do is we went out and purchased tiles and did the repairs, and then they just gave us some credit.
Credit. Yeah.
Still.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Brand-new roof, flat roof and.
Flat roof and metal roof. Um, yes.
And the, the envelopes completely done. We re-skinned all the awnings.
Yes. Yes, and we're waiting to, to put those back up until the spring. Um, just because the roof is now metal instead of the shingles, we wanted to wait and see how the snow's gonna fall. We didn't wanna damage those. So the spring, they'll go back up.
Shield roofing.
Yes. Yes, and.
Thirty-year roof, too.
Yes.
Thirty-year roof. The standing seat that, that is ten.
And the best part about it was we didn't have to close one single day for any part of the renovation. Um, which was phenomenal because we were afraid on the back half, when they put the siding on the back half, that's where all of the electrical things are attached. Um, but everyone just came together and worked together, and we were able to remain open. So, um, everyone saw value in how important our building is for our seniors. So it was just great to work with, with those types of companies that were very family-oriented.
All right, anybody have any questions for Amy at this point, other than the wonderful job you all's doing?
Thank you.
Do you keep track of the people coming and going in the senior center?
Uh, yes. Everyone that comes in and utilizes the resources, um, they, we do have an intake form that we're required to fill out for the state so that we can see, um, you know, what, what, or the demographics of who's coming and going and kind of what classes are doing well and that sort of thing.
Any other questions?
All right, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
All right, the assessors are here. Bill Kearns, Executive Director for Burke Morgan County Board of Health.
Sorry, I didn't bring any food.
You, you would take the health department when you're something. You see where all the food went down, don't you?
I did. He's not dumb.
Knowing the health department, he'll take that. He'll take it because he'll wanna inspect it.
Expect it and bring, bring us back the crumbs?
Quality insurance.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll start right off by saying I'm asking for level funding.
I see that.
Uh, you did. Um, ninety-two five is what the council graciously gives us. It's about four point six percent of my almost two million dollar budget. It's good seed money. Um.
That budget includes Burke and Morgan?
That's correct, uh, being that we're combined board. It, it's good, it's good seed money for what we're doing. We do, uh, as I know was mentioned last year, we do write grants. And we're able to acquire, uh, ten percent indirect cost on those grants. Those grants are, are dwindling. One of my, uh, grants that I have that I'm more, is really concerned about is our harm reduction grant. We were granted a, a second year on that grant if we provided additional services. Those additional services was to incorporate our program in our Morgan County office as well. So we did receive that, but that'll, that'll end this year. Um.
Do you think, do you think it's gonna end in this year?
It will end. The grant period ends April thirtieth.
You don't think it's gonna be another?
A third year?
Another year, or do you think it's just gonna be dead?
It's up to the legislature.
Right.
Um, I'll get on those points in a minute, but it's up to them and the state and what they, grants they can get to send down to us.
Does it really work well?
It, it's an incredible program. Um, we're, we're probably the best, um, in, in the state, um, as far as what we do and tracking what we do and the differences that we're making. Um, I would, I would put us up against any of them. And, um.
You know, you know it's going well when Angie Gray goes to Harvard and goes and testifies in front of Congress.
And she's coming here for Thursday. Uh, she has no idea that she's gonna be recognized by the council. She just knows she's gonna come talk about harm reduction.
There you go.
So, uh, I, I, I laid the story. But we, uh, so we use our dollars, um, quite wisely. We, uh, I did ask for an additional five thousand from the, uh, the city of Martinsburg this coming year, totally to put into the harm reduction program, because I'm trying to shore that program up so it continues. Um, the differences we're making are incredible. There is some legislature out there that's trying to destroy.
Yeah, I saw that.
Harm reduction programs. One of them's Senate Bill two eighty-six. It basically says you can't have a syringe access program. Well, we collect back more syringes in this county than what we provide. We have people that go around and clients just go around and collect and bring in. So we're making a difference, but that's what brings them through our doors, is that syringe access.
Yeah, because I tell people all the time, Bill, that I was against that, my reduction at first, and then when you got educated and listened to what all it's gonna do is initially establishing that relationship.
Correct.
Because there was a lot of fear out there at first that they're gonna arrest me.
Oh, they ran, the first ones ran out the door.
Right.
Because they were afraid they were, it was a sting operation.
But, but it's all about getting you the help that you need to turn your life back around.
There's not a person that's come through our program that we've referred to treatment and has become clean that didn't initially come through the door for our syringe access program. And now today I find out there's another, uh, a, a house bill that's kind of, it, it, it's also pretty damaging to syringe access programs. What we're doing, we're making a difference. Um, we're, we've learned from other people's mistakes, so we're not recreating those. But those grants are, are, are one-time things, so we can't guarantee each year that I'm gonna have that. I've been here, oh, actually, March will be twenty-four years. I wrote a radon grant every year since I've been here, and this past year it went away. So can't provide those free test kits. It's just some restructuring of the dollars, and they stopped giving dollars out to, uh, the counties that they did before. Um, and we have some one-time grants that we've done, um, some diabetes, as you've seen in our, uh, our current budget year, uh, that provides funds through the region or throughout the state for public health nurses to get programs up and running that we were the recipient of that grant for. So we can get that ten percent, but again, when those grants go away, we'll continue to write them, but it's not guaranteed funds. So we, we, we don't just spend that money. We, we, as you've seen by our, our balance, our unencumbered balance, we just don't spend that. I'm, I'm a very good steward of taxpayer dollars.
You are.
So I like to reinvest what we have. So when we look at, um, hoping to get our, our addition put on our building, that I know you're all working with the architects to get us in that next line, we have three-quarters of a million dollars that we've saved up to be able to put towards that that will not cost the council money.
Five years ago, you and I, we crossed in the hallways and.
Half million dollars.
Right, and we talked about need more space.
Mm-hmm.
And my thing to you was, come back when you got the money. You said, okay. And you came back and we made it happen.
Absolutely.
Great partnership.
Great partnership. Um, I tell everybody that. I'm, I'm lucky to have who I have sitting, sitting in front of me as the director for the health department.
And so we.
We couldn't, we couldn't do it without you all. Um, same with, you know, the commission in Morgan County is supportive. The city of Martinsburg, the Board of Education, we get total support for our program. We're not in danger of closing our doors, um, like so many health departments across the state are, is because we have your all's support. So when I say, you know, I'd have this money, I wanna, I wanna invest that back into the county. It's your all's facility. It's not ours. We're your health department. So we have up to that amount of money to reinvest to make our building better and bigger and accommodating because of the number of people that we see. We're trying to look towards the future of all the businesses that's coming to our county. That's great. But along with those businesses comes people, and we gotta take care of those people. So when I look in the future in my crystal ball, I see that we need more staff. And we're gonna make that happen. We need more inspectors because we have more food service establishments opening up. That's great. I need more inspectors. So, um, we need more nurses. Trying to get qualified ones are, are difficult. So when you see that, that our previous fiscal year that we closed out, we had a surplus, and we had the one the year before, but it's not because we necessarily had extra revenue. We, our expenses were low because down on staffing. So when we get additional, I have a health officer that's sharing an office with a supply clerk.
I, I just talked with someone earlier today, and his statement was very correct on saying that we have a thousand job vacancies in Burke County every day. Plus the rest, right? Because we have more jobs than we have people. So on the clinical side, other than the outreach and all this other stuff, needle exchange and things like that, if those programs wouldn't be in place with our economy doing better than what it was ten years ago, or, yeah, about ten years ago, would your numbers be down, or is it because of the programs we have? I mean, because you would think if you have all kinds of work, people are back to work, they would depend less on your services. It's sort of like Mills or Wills was here. Was Mills or Wills was here, and they said our numbers are up. I said, well, and that was a good thing to her, but for us, it's a bad thing in my opinion. The people wanting more meals delivered to them.
A, a large number of the people that we see on our clinical side are either uninsured or uninsured, but we also have the ability to build private insurances. So whether they're working or not working, probably our, I would say our clientele's not going to decrease what we're seeing.
So it doesn't matter what the income level is?
No, not, not. We, we was able to change that years ago. So when you look through the financial report, you see private immunizations. We also do a travel immunization clinic. So, um, we're, we're seeing all, all levels of, uh, community people, and actually, people from outside of our county come to us because of our travel clinic that we have. So we're, but we're able to bill for a lot of those services, or else our revenue would be way down.
And I, and I guess some of what I was thinking about, like, I'll say this, is if our, if there's more people dependent upon some services, deals and all this other stuff, then what are we doing right here, this block there, right? Because it should be less.
Many things we do in our clinical side. There are other medical agencies in our county that do the same thing. Immunizations, animal planning, women's health screenings. Nobody else is really going to sexually transmitted infections, um, uh, in TB clinics that we're doing. Nobody, nobody, there's no revenue dollars that's generated with those outside of state aid dollars that we get. But we're, so we're doing those programs, and we're not really, there's not competition. Everything the environmental side does, as you know, is we do. Getting, getting qualified people. Um, I have one of my inspectors that actually drives from Cumberland every day. For that salary that's not real good. But enjoys her job. Enjoys. But enjoys her job, enjoys it. So, I do, I have, I have openings for Sanitarium, for Morgan, which we do separate all those dollars. That's money that they spend on there, so I keep those separated. I have nurse position open in, in Berkeley County, I have clerical positions open in Berkeley County. But as we continue to grow, we're going to have to have more people, and we're gonna have to have space. So, we're, we're excited about getting the expansion, and we're even more excited that we can bring, again, the money to the table so that it's not gonna cost the council additional monies, although, as I can't talk more highly about the maintenance department and the IT department, because they, they're incredible. When you talk about in-kind funding, I could easily tell you 50, $60,000 a year that we get in in-kind funding, between the size of our building, the garbage, the IT services, I could go on and on.
Right. The building's looking nice, too.
It is. And the community service people, if you haven't been out there, the community service people did an incredible job on our, on the landscaping.
Thanks to her.
I didn't get paid to say that. I didn't even know.
She usually has a little jingle to her walk, but she's, she don't have that jingle today. What happened, Bill?
It's, but it's beautiful, better than it looked when we first moved in.
Oh, yeah.
So, a, a lot of appreciation goes to their hard work.
Just, just your population, though, aren't the numbers on all these things, we're talking about, wanting to continue to go up?
Yeah, yeah, somewhat, but I was hoping, I was hoping the more people that went back to work would, would be more educated, might be the wrong word, more independent, especially on the meal side. And what we, what we try to
Yeah, Mills on Wheels is just for the elderly.
It's just for the elderly.
Homebound, that'll.
But we also have an aging population as well.
What are you talking about? Has nothing to do with it.
He doesn't have a super age.
Must be you. It's you young guys' rage.
And, 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 and gentlemen, Elaine, that's one thing I didn't know, so that, that's good to know, that, that's just our seniors.
Mm-hmm.
And she, and she
Homebound, homebound, they have to be homebound.
Right. And she did, she did say that, you know, it's the senior popular, it seems like we have more seniors in the state than what we do.
We do, because the youngins are moving out.
Right. They're smarter than we are.
I moved in. What the heck's wrong with me?
We, we do, as the census goes up, we do get additional state aid dollars that's generated off that, $4.00 and some cents per person.
Is that done from last year numbers or something?
Well, it, it gets, it's adjusted each year, an estimate, and I guess until the census gets actually done, and then they make that final adjustment.
Ah, so they're making adjustments without
Each year, there's an estimated increase, and so we see those dollars, and it all helps. I don't budget for it, but it's always nice to see the next year, so we have been able to give staff some increases to get their salaries up a little bit compared to our neighboring counties and states. And there's still a long ways to go, but we're way better than we ever have been. So, you know, for the health department down here, just to give you an example of what our staff, we have 20 staff members down here in Berkeley County, and I have four staff members in, in Morgan County. The
Down at Sanitarium?
We are. That's why I have an opening.
Down at Sanitarium here?
In Morgan County, Morgan. So, I have one of my staff members down here helping cover some of that up there for like two days a week. So, it, it, it's, we don't have a large number of staff, but the merger is, it was the hardest thing I've ever done in my life, but it was the best thing that I've ever done in my life. It's, it's reduced so much duplication that we were doing and reduced so many man-airs. And now, the, both health departments have supervisors on staff, at least one day a week on both of them. So, Angie does a day up there, Kara does a day up there, I'm up there a day, our record preparedness, health promotion person's up there. And so, it's really helped all the way around.
Be careful about talking too happy about it, they might want you to expand it a little bit.
More people in Morgan? There's no room to put up. The morgue, the morgue's gone, so it's
Jefferson. He's talking about East.
Oh. That's Dr. Reedy.
How much consolidation was there elsewhere in the state?
We were the, we were the only health department that has done it in 40 years, and we still are. Nobody else has followed, nobody else has followed too.
So, the, the director didn't push it anywhere?
He, he's gone.
Last law?
We have a, we have Dr. Kathy Slimp as the health officer for the state.
Is that one of the reasons he's gone?
No, no, no. It was, it was, it was not the most honest of things. If it wouldn't have been for Norwood's help and, and Richard Gay's help, it, it, it went and it went. But anyway, I just, again, I want to thank you all for what you do provide to us. We're your health department, so we're just asking for that continued support and taking into consideration everything we do provide and what we're gonna provide, and, and looking forward to that building expansion starting soon.
I mentioned it two weeks ago.
And we'll be meeting with the architect next year. So, we're done with the design portion of DRC soon.
And spoke, I've spoken with the Board of Health, they're on, they're on board with our plans, and I think it's good use of the dollars that we have.
Harm reduction primarily funded through state grants?
The harm reduction primary cover, primarily is through the state grant, but there are certain things that you can't use state tax dollars for, that we provide to reduce the amount of infection or possible infectious disease such as syringes, hookers, and things of that nature, that if reused can spread disease. We cannot use state tax dollars for those things, so we're very limited in what we can. We do have, we no longer have to have the purchasing of our Narcan, that's actually provided by the state grants, that we were using the county grant that we, that Rachel helps with, to provide, purchase that. But there are certain things that it cannot, but the state grant does also cover staff time, and to be honest with you, the staff time is, if I lost every bit of the state grant, I would still be able to supplement my staff time other ways, but the concern of mine is being able to provide supplies when they come through our door.
Have you ever reached out to PIDE?
We have, and we, I'm actually one of the board members on, on the Martinsburg Initiative, and one of our board members is Laura Pepperd from PIDE. We actually have two board members from PIDE, so yes.
The, the only reason I ask is they just recently approached us, they have some unexpended fund from budgeted use that they ask.
But those are federal dollars, for the most part, and they're limited to what you can purchase with.
Right. So, so I have to ask, if Andy Gray went and testified in front of Congress, are they thinking I'm not doing something with the needle exchange program?
No, I was just backing up to, to help ensure those dollars continue to, to flow.
So, it's flowing from the federal to the state now, with the state government?
Yes, sir.
But you're thinking the federal government's gonna stop that flow?
I, I, I think if the grants do come down to the state, they may be more, they may be limited. We never know what grants are gonna come down. It could get a third year or a fourth year. You always have to, if you're gonna continue, the way this one is, if you're gonna continue, you have to do some kind of enhancements to it. I've not had any indicator that anything's gonna be there after April 30th this year. At least I did have some assurance in the first year, that we were told if money's come down, we're going to, as long as you can provide some enhancements that you could qualify for applying for those grants.
And how many people are you seeing on needle exchange now?
And, and it varies. We're seeing 50 to 60 people every week, and those aren't all repeat. Some of those people may only come every two or three weeks. We're seeing new people every week. So, are we hitting the huge part of our population? No. But we're taking care of those, and our, and our results are, we're getting people clean.
Right. And that's one of the success stories out there, one in Markham, I could have a newborn.
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
I was very happy.
The thing that bothers me is in other parts of the state, I don't know how they screwed it up so bad.
Well, some of our legislators, and I was down last week speaking to legislators, everybody that I could, could talk to, and there is one legislator, I'm not gonna mention their name, but they said that the reason for the opioid addiction problem in our state is because of our required immunizations for children.
Somebody close to us?
No, no, it was none of our local legislator.
Well, that
Only thing I could think of, well, you know, that child did get a shot when it was a child. Other than that
And they didn't like it then?
And they didn't like it. But, but we have constantly, we, we're standing strong. Our state does one thing very well, and that's our immunizations. But, but there's like six bills this year trying to do away with that.
How many, you know, needle exchange programs are active?
I wanna say about four active ones, because Knollwood-Charlston's closed, and they, yeah, they closed, Harrison-Clarksburg's had to close. Those are all information that's out there. But there are maybe five, I wanna say, active, meaningful service, Wheeling, Cabell County, of course. I forget what the others' names are, so I shouldn't start name dropping.
Is there any move to reopen the Charleston one?
I, I, I talked with their health officer, Dr. Young, a good bit, and they would love to, but it's gonna take some work in the, in their city to make that happen. The Harrison-Clark
Operation?
Yes. Harrison-Clarksburg Health Department, they, the city told them they could not do a needle exchange in the city limits, because they're right down, all the downtown stores and the community did not like it. So, they actually had their doors, policemen lined up in front of the doors, door in one of their clinics wouldn't allow anybody in. So, they just, the Board of Health there decided to expand that clinic. So many things go against, but, you know, we're doing the best we can to combat this problem, and if you, if you stick your head in the sand, you're, you're doing a disjustice to the, to your community. There are people that come to us and they have a problem, and we're here to help them. And again, Angie can talk way better about that, I hope you ask her to before you do your work, so.
Can I ask a question here? On the harm reduction program expense, harm reduction family?
We, we had a, a, a program, another add-on to our harm reduction program that would cover a nurse practitioner being in our clinic, so anyone that comes in that was childbearing, that they could actually enter into our program, get exams. That was a one-time thing.
All right, Bill. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right. Take a quick break. Maria's not here, tell her to go to the restroom if you need to collect the stuff. All that stuff.
You're definitely sweet as well.
All right, you ready? All right. All right, we're back in session. Next on our agenda is Maria Lawrence, Development Director for Hospice. Presentation for 2020-21 budget.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for allowing, allowing us to present to you. Hope you enjoyed the cookies and other tchotchkes that, that I provided. I assure you they're under the $25 limit, so you can accept all of those or turn them back in somewhere else. Give them to somebody else.
Pay it forward.
Regift.
I don't think Norwood falls, falls, falls under the ethics side of it, do you? You can take them home with you.
That's pretty funny. My goodness, we're in Norwood and he appreciates the cookies. The second round of cookies.
He's not gonna be here a whole lot longer. When, when are you planning on retiring, Norwood?
July 31.
July 31.
Wow.
Friday, July 31.
Friday, July, what time?
5:00 PM.
Okay.
That's when the, that's when the party starts, right ladies?
5:01.
Right, right.
It'll be a celebration.
Hey, it'll be 5 o'clock somewhere.
Be a celebration.
There you go, there you go.
I think there'll be a lot of people celebrating my departure.
Not anyone in this chamber, of course.
Nah, he don't know how fortunate he is to have been working with five Republicans.
I do.
Well, you're welcome, Norwood.
Yes, yes, exactly.
It's my Democratic heartburn, working with five Republicans.
So, just a couple of quick facts about hospice that can handle in the year 2019. We really did have a fairly incredible year. We took care of more patients in 2019 than the year before. If your numbers people, we served 941 patients. That's up from 881 patients in 2018. At our inpatient facility, we served 394 and that's up from 308 the previous year. And one of the things that we tell people, and most of you are certainly familiar with our program, is that our goal in hospice is to take care of more patients, which we did last year, for longer periods of time. And many of you know, who have had an experience with hospice, that one of the great obstacles that we have to overcome is the fact that people think that when you go to hospice, you're gonna die in three days. And so we, we struggle with that and we try to refute that claim as often as we can. So, one of the things that I'm happy to report as well is that our average length of stay for our patients went from 93 days in 2018 to 99 days in 2019. Doesn't seem like a lot, but it really does. So, but it really is. So, where do those 99 days come from if everybody's coming in those last three days? Well, we obviously serve patients primarily in the home. This morning, we had 180 patients in our program and those are primarily taken care of in homes, private homes. But they are also cared for in all of our area, nursing homes, assisted livings, and of course, in our inpatient facility. You know, nursing home and, and private care homes have a tendency to have a longer length of stay because those folks are perhaps more critically ill for longer periods of time. And the nursing homes and assisted livings really like to have hospice come in there and lend, and lend a hand in those kinds of facilities. Yes?
Do you deliver services to Hampshire County?
Yes.
Do you have a supplemental, something going on in Hampshire?
Yes, that's a great question, Jim. So, we have, we have all of our offices for Berkeley, Jefferson, and some Morgan consolidated at our campus in Carneville. So, all the nurses, the aides, the social workers, the chaplains, who service those counties work out of our Carneville office. But we also have a satellite office up in Romney because it just wouldn't make sense for our teams to start in Carneville and then go to Rio. Anybody been to Rio?
The downtown shopping center in Rio?
It's the mall.
So, that's right, that's right. So, that's a great question. So, we do have a team. There's a nurse manager, there's three nurses, three aides, and then we move our social worker up there and our chaplain works up there part-time as well. So, because it wouldn't make sense.
Is hospice a member of a larger hospice group?
That's another great question. So, we are part of an umbrella organization called the National Hospice and Palliative Care Organization. It's NHPCO. We've got a lot of acronyms. But that's not like, I could probably liken it to the local Chamber of Commerce and the state chamber. You're a member of that organization, but they don't dictate how you practice your trade. They're there as a resource primarily, but not as a funding resource, obviously.
Do you have to pay them?
To be a member, yes, we do. Another good question. So, but as I've told this group before, the primary source of our revenue is from Medicare and Medicaid. So, about 92% of our patients fall under, under Medicare or Medicaid rules, although we do have private insurance patients as well. As a rule, we do not, we do not ask patients or families to pay a charge with the exception of a room and board fee at our inpatient facility, which is what I had asked for some funding for to do.
How many inpatients?
So, 14, we have 14 beds and this morning, we had 11 patients there. And as you might imagine, the turnover there is fairly quick. Probably our largest source of patients coming is really from Berkeley Medical Center. Sometimes folks have never experienced hospice care until those last two or three days of life. And Berkeley Medical Center will call us and say, we have someone who's very ill. You know, we're using palliative or comfort services with them here. There's not any other curative mechanisms that we can use. We think that they would be better served at your facility. So, they'll come and spend a couple of days. Generally, I want to say the average length of stay at the inpatient facility is probably about six days. But that being said, we've got a lady who's been over there since November, November 16.
There's the 99 day?
Yeah, yeah, she's, she's driving up that 99 day.
Good for her.
Yeah, so, so it's a, it's a wonderful program. One of the things that I wanted to share with you, because I promised that I wouldn't take very much time and Katie has way more stuff to say than I do. One of our favorite programs is, is called We Honor Veterans. We have a very high population of veterans in the area as well as in hospice care. About 25 to 28% of our patients are veterans. And if they so choose, when they come into the program, we do a service called We Honor Veterans. And it's a, a service where we will go out to their home or to the inpatient facility and give them recognition. And some of them, especially the older gentlemen, and about two weeks ago, we had a lady who was 102, who was a World War II veteran. And we did an honor ceremony for her as well. We'll go in and, and present them with a pin and with a certificate. And it's just a wonderful service. It's very short generally. Sometimes if patients are actively dying, they aren't even aware, but their family members really want this particular service for them. And I have a picture for you. One of our incredible volunteers is a gentleman named John Sherwood, who's been around the community for a long time, was an administrator at Jefferson Memorial Hospital for a while. But he does probably about 80% of these We Honor Veterans services. And he'll go into a home and we have this beautiful service from this weekend where they're each, they're each saluting one another. And it's just, it's just a really incredible experience for, for patients, for families, to have someone who can share the veteran experience. And John has incredible stories that, that these guys and gals will tell that they haven't really shared with anybody else. And it's just one of those neat things that people oftentimes don't really realize that that's part of the care as well. So, I would ask for your consideration in, in giving us some funding for, for this coming year. And if you have any questions, I certainly can, can answer that. Jim had quite a, quite a couple of good ones there.
Couple of good ones?
Couple of good ones.
That's unusual for you.
Sometimes I'm awake, sometimes I'm not.
Well, I know several of you on this panel have had experiences with hospice and we appreciate.
And it was productive and I was very pleasantly, you know, not surprised, but you know. She was on Mission Road, my mother was on Mission Road. I mean, in the middle of nowhere.
And we get there.
Yeah.
Rain, sleet, snow, we're better than the U.S. Postal Service. I'm telling you. A number of years ago, that's a great comment, again, Jim. Randy Smith gave us a four-wheel drive, big old truck. Well, it wasn't old, it was new. It was like an F-150. And for just those reasons, if anybody has ever been out to Mission Road or some of the, the places on the other side of that mountain, they're hard to get to. And we can, we can get nurses virtually anywhere, in snow, sleet, rain, mud, all of that. So, so again, thank you for the consideration. Any other questions? Doug, you look like you have a question.
Are all those pins on your name tag, are those fundraising?
So, I have a lot of flair, thank you very much. So, one is my 10-year pin. I've now been at hospice 11 years, if you can believe that. The other is from a fundraising professionals group that I'm in called AFP. One is my Rotary pin and one is my Leadership Berkeley graduation pin. And I have no more holes, so if I get any more pins, I'm gonna have to go along the bottom, so.
Might have to get you a sash.
Yeah.
Bear badges.
That's right. I'll be like the, whatever.
The Girl Scouts.
The Girl Scouts, exactly. Any other questions, ladies and gentlemen?
As, as Jim and everyone said, it's an honor to be, have such a facility here in Berkeley County and do such wonderful work.
Thank you.
For the people in need and, and gives the family a little peace.
Thank you.
Thank you for all of it.
Thank you, you're quite welcome. And I know, I would think that all of you have been out to the facility by now, either visiting with someone, but I'm always happy to, to take people through. But just like what Jim was saying, it's, it's incredible during a time of such trauma and sadness that families get this incredible sense of, of peace and they're in a place surrounded by people who, this is their life's work. And people always ask me, even now, aren't you sad? And I'm like, but you get these stories of these veterans and of the lady who was 100 years old, who all she wanted to do was hold a newborn. And so we had an aide who had given birth like six weeks earlier and the aide brought the baby in and we have this picture of the 100-year-old with this baby. The other thing that people ask me is, don't you miss ever being at the newspaper in my former life? And I said, I still get to tell people stories and they're just so incredibly moving. And then nobody really yells at me anymore. So, there's that.
And you don't have the deadline?
That's right, that's right. Most of the time, I don't have a deadline, although sometimes we do push some things, but you're right.
All right, Maria, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you for the due.
All right, you're welcome.
Next on our agenda is Honorable King Deli Hetti, prosecuting attorney for this year 2021 budget. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. I did not bring any cookies with me. I didn't know that that was part of the deal.
That was the next day. You missed a memo, you missed a memo.
But you could give us a, one of your business cards with a get out of jail free on it.
It might be.
Am I supposed to talk about that?
No, we don't talk about that loud, right?
Just hang on.
Thanks for the opportunity to come present to you. I think this should be a relatively easy year in terms of presentation because I am not asking for any additional money and I'm actually asking for slightly less in contractual services and supplies than I have in prior years. Really happy with where we are with staffing right now. We do have a vacancy for an attorney and a vacancy for support staff. We posted the support staff vacancy and honestly, just hadn't worked on bringing people in and interviewing for those yet because we were really busy last week.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, sister.
Thanks, that was, that was by far the biggest trial we've, we've had. But just as a, a quick update, in 2019, there were 826 felony cases filed in Berkeley County and 6,588 misdemeanors filed. So, it's a pretty hefty caseload. We've seen an interesting trend where the overall number of cases filed by law enforcement is decreasing slightly, but the number of cases that my office takes to search for and successfully prosecute to completion is higher than it's been in prior years. So, there are actually less overall cases, but.
One of the things I would hear from the Sheriff's Department is violent crime. Hundred number of violent crimes. Is it?
I don't have the, you know, statistics at hand to answer that question as well as I would like to, you know, Gary worked with us on a case management program to track that, but we just haven't really had the manpower to input all of that data. We've been working for some time with the Supreme Court to try to get them to give us what they, they already input so we can check for trends like that. I, I will say that we've certainly gone through some fairly violent times recently in terms of murders. We do have some murders. And we've also had, just anecdotally, rise in violent crimes committed by juveniles, which is particularly alarming. The juvenile commits certain offenses, they can be transferred to adult status and tried as an adult. And we had, I think, four transfer hearings in January.
Is that right?
One.
One month?
Mm-hmm. One was a murder, there was a sexual assault, a robbery.
Those are the three big ones.
So, I, I do think, generally, I think calls or cases filed as a whole have slightly decreased, but I do see that we do have a particularly challenging caseload in terms of, you know, grand jury's next week, sending three different murder cases.
I mean, it's obvious for cases, caseloads to possibly be growing because the population is, I hope that the violent crimes are on a decline.
Nationally, violent crime is, is trending downward and has been for some time, but you know, our, our population is growing, so there's likely to be, you know, we're not likely to see the decrease that may be able nationally if our population continues to grow. My hope, looking at the numbers, and I can't say whether this is, whether we can point to correlation or causation, but since we've implemented a report in home confinement, it seems as though we're seeing less misdemeanors filed, less of the, you know, things that might be committed by someone if they weren't subject to that supervision.
Or that repeat?
I haven't talked to him recently to get his stats on recidivism for day report attendees. I know that generally speaking, in the past when I've talked to him, I was pleasantly surprised by how low that number is. There are always gonna be people that, you know, we try to help, they're gonna keep popping up for low-level things. But on the whole, I think.
But he's well above average, so it's less than. I think he's, he's.
Yeah, it's less than 20.
Oh, no, that's all right. Just thought I'd share a couple of numbers with you all. Like I said, my, I don't have any big asks to make in terms of budget. I can't promise that I won't down the road in future budget years, but for this year, I thought I would give you all a break and just say I'm happy.
We certainly do appreciate any breaks we can get, but your office has been a wonderful unbelievable attitude that the office has and it's no get out of free card. But at the same.
I was only kidding, I really want that.
Need a disclaimer?
Disclaimer.
Yeah, we know the idea.
But.
I regret, I resemble that remark.
I've made some great decisions and students can be transformed, turned into productive citizens and needs to be put away. I think it shows across the board.
Thank you, we really appreciate that. And I should have started out by saying, I brought with me, for those of you who don't know him, Dom Orsi, who's our, you know, office manager and helps us with the selling docket. I just assumed everybody gets Dom, so.
Well, you just have to kick me in the shits about 20 times and I'll finally remember, yeah. I've been married for 37 years, I, who are you?
Wait a minute. Who did you ask him that question to, to Jackie? Okay.
Does anybody have any other questions?
How's the, the state lab doing? I mean, it used to be such an incredible backup.
It's actually doing very well. They got some extra funding, so they really pushed things through. And in some cases, we get faster results from the state lab, I would say, than the federal lab.
Drug identification section. Bank or. Now they. Sixty-eight, two.
A lot of that is communication. They're, we just communicate with their office and also the medical family. So, issues with, but Dr. degree job, staying in touch and helping them prioritize which are cases.
I would think too, is that the drugs, I think they probably have some new products and things that can identify things because there's so many things that are covered up with other mixtures.
That, that is an issue that we run into a lot. Things that officers often have, think that our methamphetamines turn out to be water-based assault, so.
Jim's looking at your, that, it's on your budget.
Oh, there's nothing asked for these two items, but.
Athletic supplies and purchases of lottery tickets?
Yeah, I'm going on that side.
I just caught my eye and I, I wonder why they're even in there, is this, is it old?
Apparently, at some point, somebody needed it.
Somebody gave it, is that right?
Their current, Charles, current target of the council.
That's crazy.
You know, Katie, I, I, I want to say that you have done an amazing job. You really have. And, and I, I thought that you would do very well, but you have done an amazing job since you've been in the office with, with your staff, with your caseload, with everything. So, thank you very much for what you do.
Well, thank you, that really means a lot to hear that. And I also am really grateful for the council's support and being able to make that happen.
If the council will look at the spreadsheet that I provided you, as you know, personnel is locked down. You did provide pay increases effective September 1st. So, the prosecuting attorney's operating budget actually went down $5,000. But as you, as you know, payroll and payroll-related expenses went up appropriately, so. But the, the increase is still only, overall increase is only 4.67%, so it's still very recent.
And those, those payroll increases was the, we, it wasn't, Katie came to us, we, we was the one.
Correct. And that's all been built into the, the spreadsheets that I've been feeding you, all the internal charges.
Go across the board.
Correct.
Anybody else have any questions or comments?
That's a, that's a, how many assistant prosecutors you?
Thirteen.
Thirteen. You handled 6,500 misdemeanors in almost non-hemorrhage felonies.
Yes.
That's, that's.
Seventy-five hundred divided by.
So.
Thirteen.
Thirteen. It, it isn't exactly broken up evenly because the misdemeanor, we'll say in that, we have five assistant prosecutors, or no, I'm sorry, we have three assistant prosecutors to handle the five magistrates. They get the bulk of those destruction of property by type things. But that is a, it's a, not an insubstantial caseload for anybody.
Yeah, that's an average of 750 cases per assistant.
And that actually doesn't include juvenile abusive sexual assault cases, which have, you have two hospitals.
Do you happen to know how we're compared to like, Bond County?
Second busiest circuit sometimes by somebody.
Circuit-wise, I. Circuit-wise, I, last year, I had Mon County and Mon County. Mon County is a little different.
That's why I was on to their area.
Young, wild people, not old wild.
Well, that's what I was thinking, probably more misdemeanors in Mon County versus what we have, but less violent.
Depends on how successful West Virginia University has for football.
And how many councils get destroyed.
They don't play Pitt anymore, so that's a good one.
I can tell you, for example, we have half, or we have twice the population of Jefferson County. They have three quarters of the staffing in their prosecutor's office. And they have 12 under that, cases.
With three quarters of the staff.
Yes.
Thanks, thanks for the management skills.
Well, thank you all, and if you think of anything later, you know where to find me, you're all always.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Any items from the public? If not, Barnard?
Mr. President, I move to reset.
Would you, Katie, would you like?